Private your room? Okay. All right, thanks. All right, thanks. Bye.
Let's call this a special meeting Tuesday, May the ninth to consider the tavellation of business for Tris renovation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking your blessing upon all the members of our school board family. Guide us tonight in making decisions which are in the best interests of the children and the community we serve. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
Ms. Acevedo, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent, could you call and roll please?
Mrs. Acevedo? Here. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mr. England and Mrs. Dysart are not with us. Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Dr. Lewis is not here. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Warner is not with us.
Mr. Carey, you're on.
Good evening. Today we took bids for the Tris Middle School Classroom Edition. We are building nine larger than we have there now classrooms, plus a science lab and a computer lab, plus toilet rooms and everything else that goes with it. We're also extending, we're doing all-new field work. It's going to go all the way back to the back of the property, baseball diamond, softball, and a soccer field is included in this project, plus some parking. So, we had five bidders, and the low bidder, as you see, is Gibbs Construction at $5,700,000. As you know, they've done a great job on Arlene Merrill School, and they have a year to turn up to do this school, well, 14 months, 13 months, but if get started June 1st, I hope, they did a good job in getting Arlene Merrill ready, so we have to hope they do a good job with this. And they've used them a whole bunch of times, have done a lot of work for us.
Yeah, Mr. Campbell?
Yes. I move that we accept the bid recommended by the superintendent.
Yeah, do we have a second?
My second.
Ms. Acevedo's second, so now we have any comments, any questions of Mr. Carey before we go to a vote?
I do, Dr. Kraft.
Yes, okay, Mr. Long?
Let's see, first, Ms. Voce, from what I understand, this is the last of the FEMA money that's going to pay for this project, right?
The last of all the monies, the federal funds that we have, so this will be our final project.
Okay, sounds good.
Probably not, but the taxpayers have to pay for it.
Yes, well, after this.
Well, it'll go out to the public.
After this will be different, yes.
It's important.
And I'd like, you know, I'd like to acknowledge the administration for being forward-thinking with this Tris addition, because the elementary grades, as we know, are all getting up there in numbers, and these students are going to be moving into the middle school arena in a few years, so this is definitely necessary, and it's indicative of our administration to stay ahead of our needs, and so, thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Long. Anyone else?
Yeah. Mr. Carey, I see that's $50,000 less than the nearest bidder there.
Yeah, if you notice how close they all are, I mean, no one is really far out of this.
And those classrooms and those labs, and of course, labs and the bathroom, the restroom facilities are always expensive, and then the sports things that we have included in this bid, I think that's a tremendous bargain we've got there with the Gibbs people, so, and contracting this, and the last one they had was the Merrill deal out in Parish Road, and you said they had done some other work for us.
Oh, they've done a bunch of work, yeah. They did Joe Davies, they did...
That's good.
A lot of schools for us.
Yeah. We certainly appreciate Mr. Carey and Ryan Hurd on these things to make sure that these specifications are followed, because he's there bird-dogging these contractors just to make sure, and we certainly appreciate that, because we've always gotten our monies worked with him overshattering what's going on, sort of like the clerk of the works, and that makes a world of difference, and we appreciate you, Mr. Carey. Superintendent Voce, do you have things to add relative to this bid?
Not really, Dr. Kraft. We do think it is right on target with the budget amounts that we had anticipated. There's a lot of drainage work within this particular project for the outside areas, so in addition to that building that's going to be constructed, the amount of drainage and outside work is extensive.
We know that Mr. Warner is here, so he's not absent, so he'll be here for the vote. We haven't voted on this issue yet, Mr. Warner, so this is where we are. So, anyone else? Question? Comment? Okay. Here are none. We're ready to vote. We have a motion and a second, so vote your machines.
Ms. Acevedo?
You vote in everything, Ms. Acevedo.
Yeah. Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. We appreciate it. Okay, we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gaines? Seconded by Mr. Campbell. All in favor of adjournance, say aye. Any opposed, nay. So, the ayes have it, we stand adjourned.
For a few minutes.
For a few minutes, and then we'll move on to our regular committee meeting. Thank you very much. We'll call this meeting, general committee meeting of the St. Bernard Parish School Board, this February, May the ninth, 2017. Superintendent Voce, will you lead us in prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking your blessings upon the graduates of Chalmette High School. Be with them especially on Thursday evening as they participate in the rite of passage into adulthood, and keep them safe as they move into the community to celebrate the evening with family and friends. Father, we ask that you guide and direct the graduates as they begin to make choices that will shape their world tomorrow, and we pray a prayer of thanksgiving for their having passed our way. These things we pray in your name.
Mr. Gaines, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I believe we have some, a roll call, and then the super news.
Mrs. Acevedo? Here. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mr. England and Mrs. Dysart are not with us. Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Dr. Lewis is not here. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
All right, thank you. And next, we have the super news coordinator here, Ms. Snyder.
Good evening, Dr. Kraft. Good evening, board. May is a very exciting time for our schools. Testing has officially ended, and the celebrations have begun. As you are aware, last Friday, we had the honors banquet at Chalmette High School, and today, we awarded students from K through 12th grade both reading and writing awards for the Corners Award. There are a lot of celebrations throughout this month, and they will all be featured on our next month's super news, but a couple of upcoming events I do want to make you aware of, and they are in your folders marked as Document Four. Tomorrow evening is Day at the Capitol. This is hosted by parish government, and is an opportunity for the parish to highlight some of our best assets, one of which is definitely our school system. We will have two student groups highlighted tomorrow evening. The first is going to be Tris Middle School will be there with us, and their band will be playing. And the second, highlighting our career in technical education, is going to be our Pro Start students, who will be there featuring a pulled pork dish. Pro Start is our culinary and hospitality department at Chalmette High School, and they will be joining us as well. Graduation is Thursday evening at 8:00 PM at UNO Lakefront Arena for Chalmette High School, and we have graduations at both the elementary and middle school levels throughout the month as well, at the end of the month. If you are planning on attending any of those events, please just let me know, so I can make sure I can also join you. We had so many wonderful events last month, and so, without further ado, I'll go ahead and let Jack start super news.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news.
Hello, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lemoine. Welcome to this edition of Super News. We're broadcasting today from the Chalmette High School Culture Arts Center, and we're surrounded by the beautiful artwork of the talented students throughout the parish. We'll get the ball rolling as we head over to the Oak Harbor Golf Course, where the St. Bernard Parish School Board hosted its annual Lions Club Golf Tournament. Nineteen teams participated this year, and the proceeds helped fund the district's initiative to provide eye screens to all students enrolled in either a public or private pre-kindergarten program. Funds were also used to provide scholarships for students with special needs to attend the Lions Club Summer Camp. So, Alex, I couldn't help but notice that Paul Granberry at the golf tournament was walking around with two pairs of pants. What was that all about?
Well, Barry, he was scared he was going to get a hole in one.
The St. Bernard Parish School Board Lions Club was founded in the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina, and contributions from the club supported the school district's rebuilding efforts. One of the many ways the district tries to pay forward the generosity of those who came to the district's aid in its darkest hour.
And while these golfers were chasing birdies, others were chasing golden owls. Recently, some of our outstanding seniors gathered in the Chalmette High School Cultural Arts Center to be honored in front of their peers, parents, and faculty. Nearly eighty seniors received awards and scholarship money for their outstanding achievements in and out of the classroom. We are grateful for the support and contributions of all of our partners who provide our students with scholarships. We would like to particularly thank the Arlene and Joseph Miro Charitable Foundation, providing sixty scholarships to the graduating class of 2017, totaling $240,000.
Sometimes you see them, sometimes you do not. The them I refer to are students who make a contribution to their schools. These are students who put time into the school, not just in the classroom, but there as well. Now, these students throughout their years at CHS do something out of the ordinary. They participate, they perform, they lead, they belong.
Other Chalmette High School students were taking part in another special event at campus, the Top Chef in Career and Technical Education Student Showcase. In addition to providing an outstanding college prep foundation, Chalmette High School also has one of the best career and technical education programs in the state. Several of these programs were recently on display at the showcase, including demonstrations in the fields of medicine, carpentry, welding, digital media, and film and music production. Following the showcase, community members judged five dishes created by students currently enrolled in Pro Start, an industry-based certification course for students interested in jobs in the restaurant and hospitality sectors. And in a Top Chef-style competition, votes were cast, and the winning dish was announced. Congratulations to Jessica Valalongo and to all of those who made this event such a great one.
And now, we'll go from good food to good news, as our district recently hosted the team from Advanced Ed. Every five years, school districts undergo an accreditation process to ensure that the quality of instruction and systems in place support student learning and achievement. Last week, our school district went through the process. The Advanced Ed team visited our schools and interviewed students, parents, teachers, administrators, and school board members, and shared some good news. Our school district scored extremely well, and Advanced Ed Lead Evaluator referred to St. Bernard as among the better districts in the nation.
Each of the members of the board, we'd like to also thank the committee. We appreciate the validation of our hard-working, dedicated administration and teachers and support personnel, and of our students. And a special thanks goes out to Ms. Voce and Ms. Larson, who headed the team, and we appreciate all that each and every one of you do for the students of St. Bernard Parish.
We were commended in four areas, for our efforts in communicating with parents and the community, for our teachers' overall observation scores, for our effective leadership, and for our strategic planning and use of resources to benefit students. Overall, the committee was very impressed with our schools and staff, and in particular, our PLCs and the many, many good things we do for our children. So, thank you again for all of your hard work, for believing in our school district, and for being a part of our team. We couldn't do it without you.
And while accreditation news is worth celebrating, the district also hosted another kind of celebration when it hosted its annual celebrating our school community. The St. Bernard Parish School Board paid tribute to the contributions and dedication of the people who make our schools great, students, parents, volunteers, support staff, and teachers. Hundreds of people gathered in the gym of the Chalmette High School's ninth-grade academy for the event and dinner. The audience got a close look at the impact and achievements of each of the honorees as the mistress of ceremonies, Superintendent Doris Voce, hosted the event. Entertainment was provided by the Chalmette High School Band and the Chalmette High School Voices, and the CHS ambassadors served the evening's meal. Retirees were also recognized at this year's banquet. Congratulations to them, and thank you for your years of service.
Just imagine giving our employees the support they need in order to do the best job possible. Just imagine how far our children could go if their learning needs were met in every classroom, every day. Just imagine the economic driver this school district would be for this community if we met our goals year after year and became lauded as Louisiana's premier public school district. Together, we pictured those possibilities, and that has driven our work this school year.
And speaking of celebrations, Chalmette High recently hosted its honors banquet. As graduation quickly approaches, seniors were recognized for their achievements. Honor graduates also had the opportunity to hear wise words from CHS alumni before the top five graduates were announced. Congratulations to these outstanding students and all of our honors graduates. We are proud of all of your accomplishments and look forward to seeing what the next chapter in your lives holds.
And now, it's time for our teacher features, as presented by the members of our St. Bernard School Board.
Today, we salute Laurie Norel of Joseph J. Davies Elementary School. As a teacher teacher, Mrs. Norel is innovative, compassionate, and has a positive attitude and a wonderful rapport with our students, making sure they reach their highest potential.
We also acknowledge Shelley Monk, an assistant principal at Goche Elementary. Mrs. Monk has a positive working relationship with both the students and the staff at Goche. She leads by example, offering continued and constant support, inspiring others to strive for excellence. We are lucky to have her on our team.
We also salute Odile Campbell for bringing so much joy to W. Smith Elementary. Ms. Odile is a model employee who goes above and beyond to support school programs and activities. She is a true asset to providing service with a smile every day. She definitely makes Smith a better place.
We also recognize Debbie Batten, a veteran teacher who is well-loved by her students and the faculty. She cares deeply about her students and expects much of them. She is dedicated, committed, and a true asset to Chalmette High School.
Well, that will just about do it for this edition of Super News.
But before we go, we'd like to give a special shout-out to Assistant Superintendent Beverly Larson, who is retiring this year.
For over forty-three years, Larson has served the children of St. Bernard Parish, and for the last two decades and some of the district's darkest days, she has really been instrumental in our recovery, and her contributions to our schools will forever be remembered.
So, thanks, Bev, and thank you for tuning in, and we'll see you all next time here on Super News.
Where we always let...
The Super News roll. And we'll see you next time.
Thank you, Mr. Lemoine, for putting this super news together. We always look forward to this, and thank you so very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Any comments by the board members before we move forward?
Okay. Thanks again. Appreciate it. I have a point of personal privilege. I'd like to make some remarks. As all of you know, I was in the hospital in intensive care. Didn't look too good, but hey, I bounced back, and I'm here, and I hope to be around for a long, long while. God and I had a talk, and we decided, well, He wasn't ready for me to cross over, so here we are, and we've got things to do, places to go, and people to see. And of course, I'd like a point of personal privilege to commend Superintendent Voce and all her team, from the top members down to those that's contributing day in and day out to the success of this school system. Anytime when you have a fifty-point evaluation, and you average out three, three, three-point three, and the average for across the nation is two-point-seven-eight, that's a fifty-two point, fifty-two decimal point difference in those scores. Now, these people that, in that average, they're just not the run-of-the-mill. Not ever a school system is, have schools that are accredited, and not many of them seek, seek the district accreditation like we have. That's a holistic approach, and we have all the, all the schools accredited from the top to the bottom, and that's a tribute to Superintendent Voce, and this ongoing accreditation is certainly appreciated by the board members, Superintendent Voce. As you know, I did attend the National Conference in Denver. Everything went well to the end, and of course, it was all downhill from there, but that was tremendous undertaking by the National School Boards Association. I appreciated being there to represent Louisiana as the, as the president of the School Boards Association in Louisiana. So, but we had one speaker that stood out, Scott Kelly. Now, he had a brother named Mark. They were twins. Now, as you know, Scott flew up in a rocket to the space station and stayed there three-hundred-and-forty days. Now, that's a feat in itself, so he was very dynamic, and of course, the difference in Scott and Mark, Scott sometimes was looking out the window of the schoolroom and just imagining flying a plane or something like that, not always, and he didn't always was devoted to his work like Mark, who would go home and work on that homework and get it in, and Scott didn't always pay attention to what was going on. But that didn't keep him from succeeding once he got out in the world past high school and into college and so forth. So, what I did when I got back, well, I didn't get back, and I was laying in my bed, I used my phone a lot to Google, Google ideas, and I Googled his school there in New Jersey, Mountain View High School in New Jersey, and I found out something about that high school. Fifty-six teachers, six-hundred-and-fifty-two students. Now, in my estimation, that's just a little less than an average of twelve students per teacher. Well, that always helps. If you can't count them, you can't teach them, so the smaller the classroom, the more individual attention you can give students. But I found something else different about that school than here in St. Bernard, Superintendent Voce. I found that they had three students on free lunch, and they had ten students on reduced lunch. In my calculation, that's less than two percent. Now, we have eighty-two percent, and I say that we work above the odds. We work above expectations, and that's extremely important. So, we applaud our school system, everyone, the school board, the superintendent, her staff, the teachers, the custodians, everyone plays a role in the success of students, and we got to continue to believe in the students if we believe they can achieve, and I thank you very, very much. And that's my personal privileged remarks, and we'll move on and ask Mr. Gaines to step in for Dr. Lewis, who are on the annual review of Guide to Student Conduct. Mr. Gaines?
The next item on the agenda is the annual review of the Guide to Student Conduct, and I believe I see Dr. Powell here. Your doctor or Mr.?
No. My sonia.
Your sonia.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the annual review to our Guide to Student Conduct for 2017, 2018. Before I start, I want to give a shout-out to the committee members who helped to review this Guide to Student Conduct. Dr. Montreal Sinigad, Stacy Alfonso, Dennis Bradley, Allison Gro, Shereen Delly, Jessica Janak, Stacy Riley, Mary Ruffel. They were instrumental in helping to review this guide. The annual discipline committee met May 4th, 2017. The following recommendations and changes are being suggested for the Guide to Student Conduct, school year 2017, 2018. On page sixteen of our Guide to Student Conduct, first of all, I want, most of the changes that we're going to talk about this evening is about the word expulsion, as well as alternative On page sixteen, possible intervention, the principal slash designated may recommend expulsion for any Class Three behavior if he has a hurrican judgment, the circumstances were serious enough to warrant such action. We would like to remove expulsion, and in its place, put alternative placement. And let me see if I can explain that to you. We no longer expel students at the schoolhouse. What we do, we recommend to alternative schools, which is CF Riley. If a student completes the behavior plan at CF Riley, he or she may return back to the district school. Years ago, the state said that all of the school districts should have an alternative school, and the school board and it with it did so, and we're appreciative to that. So, that's why most of the talk I'm going to talk about is removing the word expulsion and placing... and placing that with alternative placement. Now, the next one, a student while under suspension or expulsion may not enter any public school campus and shall not enjoy the privilege of participating in any school-sponsored activity. Again, we want to remove the word expulsion, and in its place, place alternative placement. On the next page, which is two, we still in the possible intervention. Twenty-sixteen seventeen guide states, if the principal designated does not recommend expulsion, he or she can use the corrective intervention listed for class-two infraction. And also, as I said before, we want to remove that word expulsion, and in its place, put alternate placement. On page eighteen, the guide states, possession of unauthorized electronic device, skateboard, permanent markers, whiteouts. We would like to remove that, and in its place, recommend this change. Possession of any following, unless prohibited by a teacher, unauthorized electronic devices, skateboard, chewing gum, toothpicks, rubber band, permanent marker, whiteout, glass containers, ball stars of any kind, dolls, expensive jewelry, large sums of money of any article judged by the school personnel to be unsafe or disruptive. We want to recommend that in its place. On page twenty of the guide, and we're still dealing with the possible interventions. The guide states, the principal slash designated may recommend expulsion for any class-two behavior if it is his or her judgment, the circumstances warranted serious enough to warrant such suspension. We want to replace that, as I said before, with alternative placement. The guide also further states, a student while under suspension or expulsion may not enter any public school campus and shall not enjoy privilege of participating in any school-sponsored activity. Again, we want to remove that word and replace it with alternate placement. Twenty-sixteen seventeen, the guide states, if the principal designated does not recommend expulsion, he or she can use the corrective intervention listed in class-two intervention. And again, as I've read before, we still want to replace that word expulsion with alternate placement. On page five, page twenty-three of your guide, and it talks about due process procedures for suspension and expulsion hearing. Twenty-sixteen seventeen guide states, we're talking about due process. Fourth sentence, and it reads, should the offense call for a suspension or expulsion, the parent or legal guardian shall be notified in writing by the principal. Again, we want to replace that expulsion with the word alternate placement. Still on page twenty-three, due process. The ninth sentence, in the case of an expulsion, should the superintendent slash designated accept the recommendation of the principal, the parent or legal guardian, may within five days after the decision is rendered, request the school board to reveal the findings of the superintendent or designated at the time set by the school board, otherwise, the decision of the superintendent shall be final. Again, we want to remove that word, and in its place, alternate placement. On page six, we still dealing, on page twenty-three, we're still dealing with due process procedures for suspensions and expulsion. Again, twenty-sixteen seventeen, the guide states, under suspension, on any offense that warrants a suspension, the parent or the guardian will be notified that the student is suspended. Suspensions may range from in-school suspension or multi-day suspension or inclusion in the SOS program. Recommended change, we need to remove all inclusion in the SOS program, because we no longer have an SOS program. We still on page twenty-three. We still dealing with due process procedures for suspension and or expulsion. Twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, for time constraint, as you see, on the left, I have expulsion, and all of those deals with expulsion. And so, what I'd like to recommend, and add in its place, the word alternate placement in lieu of expulsion. Any questions so far?
I noticed that Dr. Lewis has joined us, and he's the chair, so...
You can continue.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Powell? Mr. Long?
Yes, Mr. Powell, are we saying at no time will a student be expelled from school?
No, we're not saying that. Let me clarify that. If a student attends our alternative program, participates in the behavior program that we have there, successfully complete the time spent there, he or she will go back to their designated school. If a student, for whatever the reason, choose not to attend our alternative school, then that student will be expelled and placed on his record. That's when we would use the word expulsion, if a student does not participate in our alternative program.
Okay. Say a student brings a loaded gun to school, are we not going to expel that student?
He will go to our alternative school, because he has a right to have an education. But if something like that happened, more than likely, this child will be arrested, and he will probably go to jail.
And, and let me just add into that, these, from the district schools, these are going to be the recommendations. So, the student will not be expelled at the district school level, he'll be placed in an alternative placement at Raleigh. If the student does not respond, and the behavior is so egregious at that point, he can be expelled from the alternative school. So, it's just a matter of where the action will occur. And heaven forbid, if we ever had a situation like that, and Mr. Long would thank God that that has not happened here, you know, in our, in our school system. But that could be grounds for expulsion from all of our schools, including the alternative school. It would just happen once that alternate placement is made, and from that point, there could be an expulsion from the alternative school.
My only concern is, are we lessening the, the penalty in the minds of the students by not calling it an expulsion?
I definitely do not think so. I think kids, students, teenagers make mistakes, that's why we have alternative programs. We need to remove them possibly from their district school and have an effective program with the thought of returning them to the district school. It doesn't lessen any of the consequences. In fact, the consequences, I think, are greater, because when you put a child out on the streets, then you're creating a problem within the community, and you're creating a problem more extensively even within your school system as time moves on. But if we place them in the alternative school with the hope that they are going to complete the program and do well, then that expulsion will not be on their record. And what we're looking to do is to produce productive citizens and contributing community members, and to work with our students to help them choose and make the right choices in life. So, I don't think it lessens the penalties. I think, you know, and I could be, even in the justice system or whatever, when things happen, the consequences that are in our schools are more severe, the monitoring is more intense, the consequences at the school sites are more intense, and when we have them at the alternative school, the programs that we put there can be much more effective. So, an expulsion could, in a rare case, take place, but it will be on paper from the alternative school itself after that alternate placement is made.
Okay. Yeah, as long as it's still available to us, you know, I would agree. I know we don't want to, we don't want to put kids out on the street if we don't have to, but I think there's situations where you may have to.
There are at times, and that hopefully will be a very rare occurrence. And thankfully, in this community and in our school system, we rarely see that happen.
Okay.
It's been my experience in working with the suspensions and expulsion, when I have the parent and their child there, it seems to be a less harsher punishment when I use the word expulsion as opposed to alternative. It seems, in my experience, that parent as well as child tend to cooperate with us at our alternative school. So, it's almost like a win-win situation. Yes, we want to take care of the discipline when this behavior is so severe, but it's been my experience, when I do the hearing, the parents sometimes want to kind of thank us for not using that word expulsion. As Superintendent Vouchet said, the penalties are not lessened, we still have the penalties, and we will enact the penalties when necessary.
So, in your hearings, recent hearings, you have been using the word...
Alternative, alternative placement, yes. Yes. But we still come out with the same means. We want the child to go to alternative placement, we want the child to participate in our behavior programs, and whatever service that we have, we want to make sure that that child participate in the services.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Dr. Craft?
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Mr. Powell, going back to when we established an alternative school, that was to keep expelled students off the streets. And the thing about expulsion, it's, it's, doesn't describe what has really happened when you place them within the school system, but it's an alternative setting where they can benefit and take them out of the mainstream of the school system. And at the alternative setting, you look at the whole child and try to determine what the cause and effect was for that student's action. And then they're nurtured a little closer than they would be in a mainstream setting. And then if they do well, and they make a commitment, they want to go back to the, their main campus, then they work hard to do this. Now, you will have, once in a rare occasion, an exception to that.
Yes.
And of course, when you have that, I think the justice system is, they're waiting to send them to a place that they will have a lot more structure than they have there at the alternative. They still have the freedom to leave there, come, come in the morning and leave in the afternoon, and then while they're there, they get certain social services that they would not get in the mainstream school. And I like the alternative placement a lot better than expulsion. Expulsion, that's like slapping the parent in the face, and that's, in most cases, that's when you got a great deal of resistance from the parents, as we said. Your letter say, your child is expelled. Well, in other words, in their mind, the, the alternative school is on the street, and that's not so. So, again, I think this will work well psychologically, and it's more pleasant to the parents, and the fact is, they'll get more individualized attention to spiff them up to get ready to return to the main setting. So, thank you for all the work you and the committee did on this.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Warner?
Mr. Powell, so the changes to the guide, will we be increasing the scope of work for our alternative school? And if so, are we going to allocate more resources toward them?
No, we won't be increasing the word. All we doing is changing the word. As Dr. Craft says, we do have resources there, and what we trying to do is plug in the resource for the behavior problem that that child is coming with. And we've been fortunate enough to have some resources to deal with these children's behavior. We must understand, because a child makes one mistake, we can't just draw him out. We have to deal with the problem. Sometimes we have to deal with parent's problem. So, we try to do that over at our alternative school. We try to work with the whole child. And is it difficult? Yes, it's difficult. But the staff over there is willing, is committed to do what they need to do to have a behavior change in that student, hopefully so that it can be for the betterment when that child return his district school.
What's the percentage of students that return back from the alternative school to going back to a regular school?
It's a high percentage. It's a high percentage. And I also must tell you that, some of the students, we don't feel that they're ready to go back. We're not going to send them back to their field of school, because it defeats the purpose. If we feel that that child not had the necessary behavior correction, it's detrimental in sending that child gone. But it's a high percentage.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
And let me, let me just, just add to this while we're on the subject of the alternative school. We just wrote for a planning grant to do some redesigning of the program at the alternative school, and we're partner, partnering with LSU Med School, the Osowskis and the crew that have sent in some of their personnel to work with, with our students. And we're trying to really enhance the socio-emotional, emotional behavioral aspect of the program. So, not only, we're one of the few alternative schools in the state that really offer an extensive academic program. Many of the alternative schools in the state do a lot of computer-assisted instruction, whereas we actually offer the courses full-time there with instructors in the subject areas. The state has been down to look at our alternative program and are telling us that our alternative school is really one of the better ones in, in the state, and they were very impressed with the amount of the academic offerings that we have there. But we feel that the piece that we need to enhance and work much, I guess, much harder with is equipping those students to deal better when their emotions run high, when obstacles face them, and how they need to, I guess, the techniques to control their emotions and their behavior when they're confronted with situations that they're not comfortable with. And that design of that program over the next few months, we're going to look at, and then we've got built into the curriculum, time every day to work on that in small groups and even in larger settings. So, that part of the program, we intend to enhance over the next year to year and a half, as we do the actual planning grant, and then apply for additional funds and resources to implement that, because these are all of our kids, and these are kids that live in this community and deserve the help that they need in order to help them to become much more productive and hopefully productive citizens within the community.
Anybody else? Mr. Long?
One brief follow-up. Mr. Powell, do we still have paddling?
Oh, no.
No?
Oh, no. We don't have corporal punches.
If you read this, it's prohibited.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know there's been some discussion in, at the legislature. I was always against the paddling, I was glad that we, and I thought we took it out.
We did.
But just wanted to make sure.
Long time ago.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
I make a motion that we move this to the...
Okay, let me take a point of privilege, yeah, I like to speak. On page twenty-four, and the, the whole concept is, I have no objection to change it all to, to, please, don't get me wrong here, but I want to alleviate any misconceptions out in the community, because one of the things they'll say is, oh, we removed expulsion, now we have alternative placement, there's no such thing as expulsion anymore. I could hear that happening in the community right there. So, in the line, on the fourth line of page twenty-four says, however, if a parent or student refuses the services of CF Raleigh alternative school, or if a student is denied attendance, his or her expulsion will become a permanent part of his, his or her school record. All students required to attend, so forth. Could that... school record. All students required to attend, so forth." Could that line be highlighted, bold-faced or something, to show that, you know, we still have expulsion in the record? That way, the community, "No, we didn't remove expulsion. It's there," you know, and it's bold-faced or highlighted.
They got to skip the plan and attend the alternative school.
Okay, Mr. Warner, we can entertain your motion.
Make a motion with those changes.
Mr. Warner, Miss Acevedo, second. And any, any further discussion?
Yeah, I spoke.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Okay, Mr. Powell.
Mr. Long, you have the next.
Okay, thank you. Item six, personnel changes for May 2017. And we have Mr. Granberry with us. One pair of pants tonight?
One pair of pants. Move all in one tonight.
You didn't come back with a whole one.
No, all in one tonight.
Yeah, I didn't.
And this is for information purposes only.
Right.
Give you a moment to look over it. If you have any questions. No questions, okay. So, we'll move on. Move on to item seven, 2017, 2018 personnel appointments.
That's a list of everyone at this time that will be employed in the St. North Parish School System for next year. Teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, parent educators, administrators, et cetera. Everybody. That will change by next week. I mean, two weeks, that will be changed, because we had jobs there Saturday.
All the employees in St. North, what's the total now?
Uh, about eight hundred and something.
A little over eight hundred?
A little over eight hundred, I believe.
Yeah. When Katrina hit, we had 1,260, so.
We're getting there. We can throw in.
It's in the mid-eight hundreds, I think.
Yeah, Ms. Voege is still building schools, so, you know, it's increasing, you know.
And we had some administrative retirees.
Yes.
That will have to be replaced.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Any questions? We don't need to take any action on this either.
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight. Is the personnel evaluation plan?
Okay, and you'll notice that there's no recommendations for the 2017-18 school year. No changes needed for the personnel evaluation plan.
Okay. I do think we need action on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I move if we accept this, no changes.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Craft, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? Please vote your machines.
Motion passes. Miss Acevedo, nine zero.
Okay. Thank you. One last one for Mr. Granberry would be item nine, permission to mail letters of assurance. Mr. Granberry?
That is mailed to every person who has worked for us in a substitute capacity during the school year, and it guarantees them employment for the 2017-2018 school year.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I would move to, we accept this, send it to the board.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Campbell and seconded by Dr. Lewis. Any discussion? Okay. Please vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Granberry.
Thank you. Mr. Egan, your own.
Okay. Item number 10 is request for permission to renew our flood insurance. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. In your package, you have the tabulation, or the quotes, actually, for the renewal of flood insurance for the next year. We have Mr. Timothy Clements from Clements Insurance Services, the board's agent of record, to answer any questions if you have them. We're recommending renewal of the coverage. The quoted rate is $188,165. In this quote, we are adding the new Mero Elementary School, and we're taking off the old warehouse, which is an RV that was or is in the process of being demolished. So, we're recommending that the board renew those policies.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Some motion, second. Any further questions or any questions whatsoever?
When will Mero Elementary come online? I see it's in a.
It's, it will, when we take possession of it over the summer.
The contractor has it covered up to that one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
We vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next we have, this is Lemoine.
Item number 11, adopt the 2017 Ebelorm millages.
Okay, in your packets as well, number 11 is the resolution adopting the Ebelorm millages for the next fiscal, for tax year 2017. We normally adopt these in May and provide them to the assessors office by June. As you see, the millages we're adopting are the same as last year for the constitutionally operational millage. And we also have the repurposed maintenance millage of 5.5 mills. So, we're adopting the same amount of mills as we did last year.
Any questions for Mr. Fernandez? Do you want to read this into the minutes?
We can usually do that regularly.
Any questions for Mr. Fernandez?
What's this total mileage that we, I don't know?
The total is a little over 41 mills, I believe.
Forty-one point two-two.
Forty-one.
Point two-two.
Forty-one point two-two. That's not bad compared to a lot of, a lot of parishes and schools, our school districts. We're, we're low, and that's, that's.
Very competitive when we're low, and that's, that's good. And we're fortunate in all the buildings that we've got. It's new that we haven't had to increase millage to pay for these new schools. But the next one, it'll be up to the taxpayers.
And while we're.
And hopefully, we'll see that soon. We may surpass 10,000 students in the school system within five years.
And while we're on that, Dr. Craft, I think it's, it's good to note that this is, this year's the last payment on our general obligation bonds. So, as of this point, the school system is debt-free. There are no outstanding bonds. Therefore, we do not have to levy any millage at all on the people of this community to pay for any of the buildings or any of our capital assets whatsoever. So, we own them all free and clear.
That's fantastic.
So, the only thing that we are assessing right now, tonight, is operational millage that, that we have. And this operational millage, of course, goes to the normal operating costs of the school system. And thanks to the community, the, that old, that service millage has been rededicated to the maintenance of the buildings, so that we will not be in a position of having all of these new buildings and not be able to maintain them when the HVA system, HVAC systems need repairing, all the need, a roof replacement or such, that we are building into our plan, the maintenance monies to maintain them. So, I think, I think it's really, we're one of the few public entities, I think, in the state that is totally debt-free when it comes to owning the assets that they have built, the buildings.
I think the community and the board needs a big hand on this. This is a great thought.
Thank you, David, for all you do.
I have a quick question, Ms. Voege. Maintenance, will that include technology as well, or?
The maintenance is just for the buildings.
Okay.
For the repair and the upkeep of the buildings when they need roofs, electrical systems, AC systems, and those types of things. Technology would come under the operational aspects.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make the motion. Now, we move it to the board with a recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Acevedo. Any other further questions? Not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Agenda item 12 is the 2017-2018 General Funds and Special Revenue Funds Budget, and we have Mr. Fernandez again.
In your package, you have the proposed 2017-2018 General Fund and Special Revenue Funds budgets. There are several exhibits. You also have a memo, a brief explanation of some of the items. The first four exhibits have to do with the general fund. Exhibit number one is a summary, which shows projected beginning fund balance, projected revenues and expenditures, and other sources and uses, and projected ending fund balance, and it should have been fixed. But we have also a summary of employee benefits, which shows the changes in projected employee benefits. Three and four are detail of revenues and expenditures by account by line item. And five and six are the budgets for the lunch fund and the special revenue funds. This budget includes staffing and operational expenses for the new Rowley Mero Elementary School that'll be opening this year, starting to accept students in the fall. It also includes our projected MFP amount for next year. The MFP has not been approved by the legislature yet, but these are the projections provided to us by the State Department of Education. It also includes supplemental cost allocations, high-cost service allocations, which run through the MFP. And that's pretty much it. It's pretty straightforward. Do you want to handle them separately altogether? Do you want to handle the general fund and the special revenue fund separately, or do you want to handle it as one item?
Handle it as one item.
Okay. Well, the lunch fund budget is the same. It reflects our expected operations for next year. It's exhibit number five. We show the current year's budget as a comparison. We're expecting a slight increase in federal revenues. We're also going to have a increase in personnel costs and food costs. We're not really, in a new school, we're not really handing students, we're shifting students from other schools to that, but we're still going to have some increases in those areas as well. And shows the ending fund balance for that, the projected ending fund balance. And the federal funds, the special revenue funds, exhibit number six, just shows estimated allocations. We don't have the final allocations for next year yet. So, these are estimates of what we feel these major funds are going to be in the coming year. And we will bring you the final allocations when we do the revised budget in the fall. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Fernandez?
No. I say, thank you, Mr. Fernandez, for giving such a thorough document here. That does take an extended amount of time for all you and your people in your department. And we thank you for always being ready to fill any questions that we have relative to the component parts of the budget. And we'll look forward to, hopefully, the state maybe squeeze us some more money or not cut us before we come up with the budget for the final disposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Fernandez? This item does require action.
I was moving to move.
Okay, we have a motion made by Dr. Craft. Do you have a second? A second by Mr. Campbell. All right, if there are no further questions, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay. Agenda item number 13 is the bid tabulation on new buses.
Okay. In your package, item 13 is the bid tabulation for new school buses. We had advertised for the purchase of eight new school buses. The purchase of these school buses will expend the remainder of our FEMA vehicle replacement funds, and we'll add the final buses to our fleet. We are recommending that the winner, that the low bid be awarded, who is Kent Mitchell, with a bid, total bid of $693,216 total.
And what is the monitor?
That's, as I understand it, that's like a backup, kind of like, it protects when you're backing up the bus. Yes.
BB.
Yeah. It added a couple, it added a couple.
Will back go for a child.
Yeah, it added a couple of thousand, it added a couple of thousand dollars to the price, but we thought it was a good investment.
It's good. I prefer that monitor.
Yes, question for Mr. Long?
Also, another good investment was air conditioning the buses. All the buses we've purchased now are air-conditioned.
Yes, sir.
Talking with a few bus drivers, they're very happy about it also. But I'm glad we finally started replacing our fleet with air-conditioned buses. I know we, I've been one of the ones that's pushing that for many years, and so I'm glad we're starting to do that. Thank you very much.
The first priority was getting the schools air-conditioned, and now the buses air-conditioned. I know, I'm quite sure, the demand for the field trips are just with those air-conditioned buses.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Campbell?
Yes. The first statement topic says tabulation on 10, then eight in parentheses.
That's a typographical error, Mr. Campbell. That should be eight. We'll have that corrected.
Eight new buses.
It is eight new buses. That is what we're purchasing. I apologize for that.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Campbell. Any other questions or comments?
I have a crew read everything.
I just have a question. After we approve the bid, when do we anticipate delivery of the buses?
Kent Mitchell, we spoke with their officials, and they stated if we can let them know as soon as the board approves the contract, they can get it right away and hopefully have the buses in by the beginning of school.
Beginning of the school?
That's what they hope.
We hope to. That'll be very tight.
It'll be tight, but the sooner, if we inform them right after the meeting, if the board approves the bid, or awards the bid, we will let them know. And they're hoping to get it in for the beginning of the school.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Question for Mr. Craft?
Yes. On the warranty, that looks like a good warranty. The body in the chassis three years, and the engine five years, are 100,000 miles, whichever comes first. Probably the 100,000 would come first. And then the transmission's seven-year unlimited. That's, that's a good warranty. You did good, David.
Well, thank you. Well, actually, Mrs. Gennart was the one that spearheaded.
Who negotiated that?
Mrs. Gennart was the one that spearheaded all the specifications.
All right, all right. Well, hey, you held the purse string.
I'll take credit for it, but.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Fernandez? Okay, this item does require action. So, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Acevedo, seconded by Dr. Craft. If there are no further questions, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Agenda item 14 is the request to approve the bid tabulations for spices and seasonings, class two, cereal, dried beans and crackers, class three, frozen foods, class five, meat and wheat products, class six, poultry and eggs, class seven, seafood products, class eight, and canned goods, class nine, for the period of July 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. And we have Ms. Bloom with us tonight.
Good evening. This is, we got bids from five vendors. They're tabulated, and they were recorded, as you can see. And the lowest bid for each line item was the one that we're recommending for approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion. Seconded for board.
We have a motion by Dr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Long. Do you have any questions or comments from Mrs. Bloom? Okay, if there are none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Agenda item 15 is the request to approve the bid tabulation for milk and milk products for July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. And again, we have Ms. Bloom for information.
This is a yearly bid. Bids were received from two vendors, and this is an all-or-nothing bottom-line bid for our milk product. Brown's Dairy was the winner, the lowest bid of all of the items.
Okay. We've got a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Warner. Do we have any questions or comments from Mrs. Bloom? Okay, if there are none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Agenda item number 16 is the request to approve the bid tabulations for bread and bread products for July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. And we have Ms. Bloom again for more information.
This is also a yearly bid, and we received bids from four bread vendors. These are lawn items, and you could see the tabulations for each one that was awarded, that will be awarded.
So move.
We have a motion by Dr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Campbell. There are any questions or comments from Mrs. Bloom? Okay, if there are none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
And agenda item number 17, request for permission to advertise quote solicitation schedule for fresh fruits and vegetables for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
We're asking permission to advertise, and if you look at the advertisement, it is a one, one-year advertisement, which gives the opening of all of the produce, because we award produce and we ask for solicitations every month. And so this will give anyone, any vendor, a chance to submit quotations during the year.
Okay. Yes. Okay, we've got a motion by Ms. Esposito, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any other comments or questions from Ms. Bloom? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Agenda item 18 is superintendent's recommendations. Turn it over to Ms. Gaines.
Okay, it's just that the regular meeting in two weeks, we will, right at the beginning, have a public hearing on the 2017-18 general fund and special revenue funds budgets. We're also happy to announce that we have gotten our, I don't know if it's the 24th year maybe, recognition on our financial statements, and we'll have those awards to display at the regular meeting. And we will bring back our academic games participants and their results at the regular meeting as well. And just as Ms. Schneider said at the beginning, because with the super news now, I don't have to go through all of those, but I'm going to reiterate again, our high school graduation Thursday night at the New Orleans Arena, 8:00 PM. It'll be a wonderful event for all of our students and our parents and community members.
Okay, is that all, Ms. Voce?
Anyone else have any comments or anything before we ask for an adjournment? Mr. Long?
One comment. In conversation with Mr. Warner, we were wondering, Ms. Voce, if there's a possibility of, after the Merrill school is turned over to us, can we look into maybe having a open house for parents and the community to view the, view the school before it opens?
Okay, we will try to arrange that. Hopefully, that we, we can coordinate the turning over of the school, delivery of furniture, and getting everything set up in enough time, but we will definitely try to make that happen.
If it's, if it's a major problem, then...
Hopefully, it will not be. We'll have it in enough time, so we will look into that and make sure that happens.
Thank you. Yeah, we were just, me and Mr. Long, we're kicking it around. We were just wondering, you know, for traffic patterns and stuff like that, how to enter the campus for the parents and stuff like that.
Well, the schools always have, in fact, all the schools have those supply nights and the nights before school actually opens, and they take the kids at different grade levels and the parents, and they come do that as a normal course. Now, we can look into something a little bit more special at Merrill Elementary School if any community members would like to come in as well. So let's see what we can arrange once we get those dates coordinated and finalized.
Thank you, Ms. Voce.
Okay.
Okay, before we adjourn, anything else? Okay, I want to thank the community for all their past support and continued support for the public schools in St. Bernard Parish, and we wish them well and thank them for sharing their students, their children with us to educate them to the extent that we're able to do so. We entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Campbell?
We adjourn.
We got a motion adjourned, seconded by Ms. Esposito. All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, we stand adjourned.